Four, three, two. Recording started.
Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Weldy of Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the May 12, 2021 Township Supervisors Work Session. It's 6:34 PM right now. Five supervisors are present, myself, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Cummings, and Mr. Kutsaradis, along with Township Manager Joe Galdo and some other guests. I'll turn it over. This meeting is being held virtually as advertised, and I'll turn it over to Joe Galdo to lead us through the work sessions agenda. Joe?
Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Board Chair. Just going through our agenda items real quick for tonight's meeting, and then I'll have the respective directors do some talking. It's under Agenda Item, the Consent Agenda. There's nothing in that particular Accounts Payable batch that is pertaining to any type of litigation that has been referenced in the past, so that takes care of that issue on Item One, Consent Agenda.
Later.
As far as Agenda Item Two, we'll have Lisa speak on that matter. We'll come back to Lisa on that issue, but that's dealing with two particular issues, and that's dealing with the Township Employee Handbook that we want to bring forward and update, basically. So there's some moving issues there. What I would like to do in the upcoming board meetings or upcoming work sections is basically give you the various sections, so it's not one just big, huge manual that you've got to review or look at or digest. At least this way, we parcel it out a little bit, and it's a little bit easier for everyone. And we can hear everybody's comments on that, too. So, the other item is Agenda Item Number Three, and that is dealing with a Realty Transfer Tax Refund to a gentleman by the name of Greg Bertino. Frank probably knows a lot more on this one, but we'll go through a little bit on that. The petitioner, Greg Bertino, petitioned the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, Bureau of Individual Taxes. Basically, a determination was made at that level that the assessment be strict, basically, in its entirety. This is dealing with four East Bristol Road. The Bucks County Recorder of Deeds shows a local Realty Transfer Tax Distribution of $1,505.68, and that transaction took place, according to them, on 1/13/2020. This has been reviewed. This particular issue, you were supplied probably forty, fifty pages of documentation on this issue. It was reviewed by the Lower South Police Department. There was an alleged fraud that occurred, or so to speak. So, we had them review it. They felt everything was fine with regard to this transaction going before the Board. Also, in addition, the Bucks County Tax Claim Bureau Solicitor also reviewed it and basically said that it's okay to release any funds, this $1,505.68, with regard to this transaction. Right? And Frank, like I said, Frank could probably speak a little bit more on that, because I believe his firm handled the other part on it. Okay. Item Four, again, it's another Realty Transfer Tax, but this is a refund going to an abstract company with regard to 32 Northeast View. This was an estate item. Basically, it was a title company era. Transfer taxes were taken, but there's an exception. If there's an exception, there should not have been the tax. So, basically, again, Bucks County Recorder of Deeds shows a local Realty Transfer Tax Distribution of $1,000, and the transaction occurred just recently on 4/20/2021. Also, on the manager's report, we have, again, you know, as we know, we're all getting inundated with a lot of phone calls dealing with JP Nascarro, and whether it be refuse, recycle, or yard waste, we're having various issues. You know, and the meeting did occur this past week. Unfortunately, I was out sick. Ms. Kaplan was present for the meeting, and that occurred with North Hampton Township and Upper Southampton Township being present also for this. And Deb will eventually speak on that issue for us. As far as the police chief, we're getting, we're hearing all these other complaints with regard to traffic and, you know, speeding and so forth. We're procuring All Traffic Solutions Shield, which is basically a speed board for the police. We're going to try, test this out. There's one, we've got one right now. They're fairly inexpensive. They're a couple grand, but we're going to try these. We'll get one, maybe a second, and put them in the hot areas that we're getting a lot of complaints. So, I think that'll help, and the chief will speak on that matter. As far as the sanitation rebates, they're still going forward. July 31st being the end of dates. Right now, we issued 907 rebates. I believe we budgeted a little bit over $1,000, so we're almost close to where we should be. And COVID is not really, and us being kind of in a lockdown manner at the admin building, the rebates are still going out the doors, and they're still getting to our residents. And lastly, and we'll probably start off real quickly with Walt. We got some numbers, basically, on American Pool. We feel comfortable and fair with the numbers that they gave us as being fair and getting this pool program up and running for Walt. So, I'm going to let Walt talk about all his accomplishments in his last week or two. So, Walt is processing and moving along very well. We're getting transactionals. I think he had well over $20,000 or $2,000 in programmatic revenue that he, that created, that was created during this past day or so, but he'll speak on that matter. Walt?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so basically, summer camp, we've gotten off to a pretty good start. We've started registration this morning at nine o'clock, and registration came in quick. My phone was blowing up till about 11:30. So, right now, we are at sixty-eight kids at Dolphin Camp out of 150, and we're at six out of twenty at the Russell Elliott, the top camp. So, we're definitely, I'm definitely happy with that. And all the calls I've gotten have been good, with all the parents. Met with my staff today. We're starting to work on the calendars and getting the trips planned, especially not having definite dates for the pools yet, so I'm going to schedule early in the summer to kind of make up for that. And then, I'm going to have three meetings with the parents. They can attend one of the three, so they can meet me, meet my staff, and ask any questions or have any issues they bring up. So, we're going to do one in May and two in June. Two at the Dolphin and one on Zoom. That way, they can get a feel of how I run camp. As far as the pool goes, like Joe said, the contractors came in, so it was a fair price. I have to finish finalizing the prices that we're looking at for the season passes. Once I get these dates worked out, I'm hoping to have an announcement on Monday to announce our opening dates and prices, stuff like that. And then, same thing with the daily passes. So, my plan with the daily passes is to limit it. They can register online, and that way, we can keep track of exactly who's coming in and how many people, and we can keep track of all the, hopefully, we cut down the issues that I'm hearing about that we had in the past. And I said, I hope to have that set up for Monday, make an announcement on Facebook and on our website. And then, I'm looking to start programming in the building next door. I forget what room it is. The building next door, I think it's the old courthouse. So, I'd like to have some stuff going on there in June, and that way, we have some summertime programming in addition to camp and pool season. And then, once school opens up in the fall, we can have something in there, hopefully, every night, and keep that place busy. And that's pretty much what I had.
All right. There's one thing I did forget. I'm sorry, Sue. Also, for tonight, when we get in the manager's report, I'll go over the first payment that is due to American Pool is due May 26th. So, what I would like for tonight is kind of, kind of an approval to release $19,018.96 as the first payment for the pool program. There would be three other additional payments that would occur later, at a later point in time. So, that would come out of the manager's report. I'm sorry, Sue.
Walt, are you keeping the dates the same for the poll that you mentioned last meeting? I think the July, was it ninth you had said?
So, we're looking, yeah, we're looking at the same dates we had set up. July 10th through August 29th.
Okay.
And that's when we negotiate the contract with the company, so.
Okay. And with the trips that you're speaking of, are those going to be trips that are taking place during camp, or is that trips separately from the camp?
There's been summer camp trips. So, I have the little guys, the three- to five-year-olds. I have Sesame Place already set up for them, and possibly their movies or something else in that range. And then, I'm still looking to book a few other trips for the older guys. I have plenty of ideas, and I've reached out to a couple companies, just looking to finalize dates and, you know, that kind of stuff, dates and times.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks for the update, Walter. You hit the ground running, that's for sure.
I'm trying.
Okay. The next item that we'll discuss is basically going back to the human resource component, which is dealing with the two sections of the employee handbook update. So, I have it for tonight. I have Lisa Adams here to go over the, to quickly go over the two updates for the employee handbook. Lisa?
Hi. So, the two sections that I had proposed today, one is for the social networking, social media. I thought that was going to be pretty important. That's why I wanted to do this one first. And this was actually reviewed and looked at a couple of years ago by an attorney over at, her name was Justine Abrams, and she's from Geneva Burns. So, she, so she actually helped with the wording for this. And it's updated from our old, our old one was from 2012, so it was pretty outdated. So, this whole section was updated, and what this policy does is the National Labor Relations Board tends to find out that a lot of language in the handbooks are overbroad and are in violation a lot of times with the, with this act. So, she went ahead, and they helped us devise this particular section here, so it would be appropriate for the time and it would, and this subject matter would be permanent to what's going on now.
I have a question.
Have you had a chance to review it at all?
I did. I had some few questions.
Go ahead.
Do you want to go first, Doug? You want me to go?
No.
On, on, it was, I guess, page three, where it talks about excluding the time when employees are properly not engaging in performing work tasks, including break periods and meal times.
Okay.
So, how do you differentiate when, if there was some abuse to it, how would you differentiate when someone was on their break, their meal, not performing work tasks? I'm just wondering, should it just be not permitted at all? Because how do you, how do you designate that if someone was doing something, that it was during their lunchtime? Do you clock in and out for lunch? Do you, it seems very great to me.
Well, we do, as far as the non-salaried employees, we do have their time cards, and they do write down when they're in and out for lunch. As far as breaks, they don't log in when they're in and out for breaks. So, they log in when they come into work, when they go to lunch, when they come back for lunch, and then when they leave for the day.
I'm not, I mean, I know it was written by an attorney. I'm not in favor of, of that. I think it leaves a really gray area of when someone can be using something and when somebody can't. Now, for example, Walt needs to be able to use social media, because that's how he's getting his information out. So, different person, people are, I guess, considered administrators for Instagram and Facebook and all, but, so basically, you're saying that if someone's on their break...
I'm sorry. This is for personal use, it says. It specifically says for personal use. On the first sentence.
So, not on...
Or the second sentence. Do not use township email addresses to register online social networks, blogs, or other online tools utilized for personal use.
Correct. But then, it talks about, about time that is during break and work times.
If I could, if I could answer Sue on that, Sue, I would tend to believe, you know, it would go back to the director's responsibility in managing their workforce. Typically, and I'll just say typically, people are given their fifteen-minute intervals or fifteen-minute breaks. Under the current circumstances, with us having a lesser staff or a lower amount of staffing, you have people not really taking that much break-wise. Let's, I'm just being honest on that part. But it would be up to the respective manager to monitor that, and typically, to have a specified time when they do go on break. So, I think it's somewhat manageable, but I do understand your concern on that, Sue, with that, with, you know, with your comments. I do get that part. But I do believe it would be left up to the respective director to monitor that aspect of when that person is on break, and that should be kind of passed up the food chain to the director when the person's going to be taking a break, whether a smoke break or a bathroom break, whatever the, you know, the case may be. But we could, we could adjust the language, and we could go back to the labor attorney and have them kind of, you know, we could give our concerns on that type of language, and we could adjust it. And this is why we're doing this, you know, this exchange, that we get it before you guys and that you have an idea of what's in the, you know, the handbook manual, or the employee handbook, whatever you want to call it. But it is a give and take, and we can notate what your concern is on that matter.
I could take a look and see what other verbiage may be out there to go ahead and propose.
But so, so, just so, maybe that I'm not wrong on this. So, it's saying about using the township email for social networks. So, for, question for you. So, you actually, on the township, actually get onto social media?
They shouldn't be doing that.
It's not blocked.
That part, they should not be done unless you're, unless you're authorized. I mean, unless you're authorized, like Walt, there's somewhat to be on there that's supposed to be communicating work, work issues or work responses with the residents. Nobody really should be going on that aspect.
But wouldn't it, I guess my question is, in the very beginning, though, wouldn't it be blocked, though? Like, you'd go on, and you wouldn't be able to get to something, because the township would be blocking the, the use of that anyway. Would that be correct or no?
No, I would say no on that. The past, the past experiences in the township building was, is that if, you know, everybody basically had access to, you know, if you wanted to go look up Google and Google something, everybody basically has access. Whether a person is going on and, you know, going on the township side and trying to access their Facebook or whatever, they really shouldn't be doing that, period, because unless you're on a quantified lunch break, but you should be doing, I think, on your, if you're doing it on your personal phone or something like that, that is probably what you're kind of referring to. If you're using your own township computer, no. Again, then that's just misusing your asset, and the asset is, is the township computer.
Hey, Joe, how do, is there some way to monitor this?
You can. I mean, there's different technology that's out there. I'm trying to remember the name in my other place that we had. It basically gives you all the websites and every, everything that everybody ever went to, and it gives you a report. I think, I think actually it's Barracuda, I believe the name was. So, if that's the case, you're able to see where they visit, what they visited, and that. But I don't think you could block them, per se, from going on there unless we just basically take the internet component off everybody's computer.
But, but there's a, like, like, there's a difference between going on and Googling, you know, MapQuest.
Yes.
And then, there's a difference of getting onto, to Instagram. So, those types of things should be blocked, opposed from, no, like, MapQuest, someone's doing, you know, those types of things wouldn't be blocked. So, there, so those two components would be different. Would, is Peter on here? Peter, would that be correct?
But our, but our, our fire marshal has an Instagram account that he does.
Correct. Those people are considered administrators. Like, when you set up something, you're considered an administrator to be able to, to access those things, opposed to everybody else.
Right. I think maybe the heading for this particular paragraph, maybe should read, "Using Social Media for Work, at Work for Personal Use," because I think that's what this paragraph is, is really kind of referring to. And then, maybe just taking out that last sentence, when the working time is, and it'll just be, "Using Social Media at Work for Personal Use." Okay.
I just worry that there could be instances that we don't need to have as a township.
I agree with you, Sue.
Well, I, I think maybe to make it more clear, maybe I'll go back and do a little more research to make sure that it's more specific as to, we don't want people, you know, blogging or using any kind of social media at work that's not for their personal use.
Okay. Lisa, this is Ray Weldy. What, what employees does this handbook refer to? Or what are, what employees are required to follow the handbook? Does it include all employees upstairs administratively in the police department, or just non-uniformed employees?
Well, the collective bargaining agreements, like all the, the union contracts, if anything is addressed in the union contract, then that, that comes first before what's in our employee handbook. So, to answer your question, everybody who is a non-union is the ones that have to go by this handbook. Any of the union employees, if it's not addressed in their collective bargaining agreement, then it refers back to our Lower Southampton Township handbook.
Okay. And is there a penalty section for the violation of any of these subsections in here, or is it an arbitrary penalty? Is it up to the township manager, the department head?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I mean, all of this, it says, it states in here that, you know, it's disciplinary action up until termination. Here, retaliation is prohibited right here. And it says right here, "The township prohibits taking negative action against employees for reporting possible deviation from the policy."
What would that be?
What would that be?
Yeah.
For reporting deviation to the policy?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking? So, if they find out that somebody's using social media in a negative manner, and they let the township know. So, it's prohibited that, you know, that that person, if that person comes back to retaliate against them, then they can get disciplinary action up until, and including termination.
Okay. So, let's say they're using social media during work hours. Is it like, the first time is a counseling session with the department head, the second time is a, one week off without pay, the third time's a termination, or is it just?
No.
Whatever happens?
No. The previous, the previous, when you're looking at the first one about the social networking, and it goes through the guidelines, it actually talks about certain rules that you'll have to follow, and to be respectful, and that it would always fall back on other bits and pieces of the employee handbook. So, it would come back to, you know, that there, if there was any complaints, you know, and, or if it was something like harassment, then it would, it would go back, would it fall to the harassment, anti-harassment policy? If it would be something with, with business ethics, it would fall back into that particular section of the employee handbook. So, it just, it just depends on what the social, the discrimination of the social networking is doing.
Right. It depends what the violation is, depending on, it's, it's not like cut and dry. First is counseling, second, it's, it all depends on what the actual...
Right.
...of a better word, offense is. It could jump to termination. It could be, depending on what it is.
Yeah. We don't want to spell it out that, if, you know, if you get caught the first time, it's going to be A. If it's caught the second time, it's going to be B. You're exactly right. And it also depends on what the violation is. So, if it's, you know, the ethics violation, if it's a harassment violation, then it goes back to that policy in the handbook. And then, you can read up on that.
It should just be blocked for the, unless the people...
Yeah. I mean, how do, how do you monitor something like that? It sounds like idiocy, you know? I mean, who, who determines what is what?
Well, this isn't only for what's happening in work, but you can, you can, you know, have it outside of work, too.
Yes.
But I don't know, I don't understand what you just said.
So, like, you could be talking, you can go on social networking, you know, on, not just through your email, or not just through a work computer, but your home computer or telephone. You know, and you don't, and you don't want anybody representing Lower Southampton Township on social media and, you know, saying that it's, that it's Lower Southampton Township's view when it's really that, that employee's view.
Right. I understand what you're saying. How do you block that, though? I mean, how do you determine what's what?
That's the whole thing with social media. You can't block it, and then, once it's out, and even, I think it says on here, too, once it's out on the web, it's kind of, you can't really take it back. It's out there, you know?
Right. Agreed.
For people to see.
Why, why would we allow it at all? I mean, we, we never know when something's going to come back and bite you in the behind with Facebook or Twitter or whatever the rest of them are.
Oh, I know. I know.
But how do, why, why would we then allow it at all?
Well, I don't think we're allowing it, but we have to have a policy in case it happens. Well, you know, as far as you say, blocking it, blocking it on the computer, if that's, you know, you don't, if you want it blocked, and only have certain people have privy to it, then, then, you know, that's, that's fine. We can do that.
Well, didn't you, didn't you already say that the department managers would be okay with it, and nobody else would be?
What do you mean, the department managers would be okay with?
Well, they can, they can, as you, Walt was just, you referenced Walt, and he's out there trying to get certain things done, and he's going to be using, potentially, anyway, Facebook or Twitter or whatever. Can't we get him a separate phone or line or whatever for his phone and block everybody else?
That's a key question. That, I'm not sure how that would work.
We could, we could talk to Premier and, and work on that, and just leave it at the administrative level, that, that below the administrative level, that, that is not occurring or won't have the ability to access that part. We could refine it that way. But again, in today's world, people do go out on the internet and, and look up things, whether it be Google, or they go to the county assessments office. And, you know, it's part of our job to go, to go on the internet at times to confirm and, and find out information. And the perfect examples were, were like Agenda Item Three and Four. So, we had to go out and do some research on those particular issues. So, it does play a role in today's world. We could certainly look at, relook at the language that was put forward and then take it from there, but we, we understand your concerns.
Right. Totally, totally different going and looking up stuff that would be at the Recorder of Deeds or something like that, opposed to being on Facebook or Instagram.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
I was talking very specifically about those items, not, not other, not other aspects of...
There are ways to block it. I know there, you know.
Okay. Lisa, did you want to go over to the last issue, so that we could kind of wrap this up, because we've got other issues to discuss?
Sure. Sure. Anybody have any questions? Yes.
I'll, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead.
Well, my, some of my, my questions were answered just now, but a question that I have is, once the handbook is completed, do we have in place that employees signs and dates that they received this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, that's in place currently?
Yes. And a copy of it is in each of the person, in each of their personnel files.
Okay.
And Lisa, I just have one more before you move on to the Personnel File. Does, does our policy, is it similar to, or does it mirror the social media policies maybe used by either Ben Salem, Andor Middletown, Andor Upper South, or North Hampton?
Um, I have not asked them for copies of their handbook, but I can certainly do that.
I just didn't know if they, you know, if, I'm sure they have some type of... You know, if, if I'm sure they have some type of.
Because we have the attorney looking at this, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else with the social network? All right. So on to the, the personnel, uh, section. And, um, initially we just had a couple of paragraphs. So this really needed to be redone as well. Once again, this one was from two thousand and twelve. And this was just enhanced. Wanted to kind of add on here the list. Um, of employees who may inspect their personnel files. And who's able to have access to it. And also, um, employees who were not able to have access to the files. And we thought that was kind of important. And these were all done through a statute. Um. And that's where this was taken from. It was from the Personnel Files Act. Um, also included on there, uh, let's see, um, a definition on the bottom. Two of, uh. How many, how many times they can actually ask for their personnel file to be reviewed. And then it has to be in writing, not just verbally.
What was that?
It has to, and, and we like it to have, we have it done, uh. Just in writing as opposed to just a verbal request.
Absolutely.
Lisa, in the middle of page two. Um, it says employees may not inspect or otherwise have access to the following records. And the fourth item down in the bullet is medical records. If there are medical records, let's say, uh, somebody gets injured on, on duty upstairs, they, they trip on a piece to park it and blow out their knee. And they go to a township doctor or the township sends them to St. Mary Hospital for the medical records. If their medical records are in their file, does that mean they can't view their own medical records?
Well, that's not a personnel file. That's going to be a worker's comp file. So that, that, that's a totally different file. Yeah. So it wouldn't even be in there.
Okay. And then.
The only thing medical may, a personnel file may be if they, uh, get a doctor's note after they've been out for like three days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, if they go to make a copy of anything in her personnel file, they have to pay the per-page copy fee. So if an employee comes in and wants to copy 10 pages. Of their personnel file, they have to pay.
Yeah. And that was in our, that, that is in our current handbook as well.
Okay.
Um, just to let you know. And that's also in the statute thirteen twenty-two. Um, it, 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 it's in the Pennsylvania statute as well. So I, I left it in there.
And.
I mean, I don't think we, I don't think I've ever had an employee, but you know, if it's an agent of an employee for something, then obviously we'd want to, uh. Charge them for copy. So I think that's why we've decided to leave that there.
And how about cell phone pictures? What if they decide to take cell phone pictures of their personnel file? Cause I don't really see much about that in here. Would that be permitted or not?
Oh, um. You know what? I'm not quite sure. I have the statute with me, so I'll have to read it, read up. Um, I don't know, to be perfectly honest. Um, we provide photocopies. Yeah, but.
I just think instead in lieu of paying for copies or trying to take handwritten notes, you could take out your phone and snap pictures of your file.
Pictures. Have a, you know what? I will take a look at that because I have the act with me right here.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I've read through it and honestly, I don't even think I've seen anything that says about taking photo, you know, photos of it.
I didn't know. Maybe if another township had that in theirs, you know, it's, it's had to have come up.
Yes. Yeah, I'll make a note on that and I'll do some research. And find out. Cause the act is only like a page long. It's not very long. I have it sitting here, but I don't remember seeing it at all.
Is there any other questions for Lisa for tonight? So what we're going to do then on the, the agenda has item number two. Um, and that's dealing with the employee handbook being updated and eventually being compiled into a, a resolution format, which would probably be. Uh, most likely resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. But for agenda two tonight, uh, board chairman, uh, we would not be going forward with that.
Okay. So that item will be removed from the agenda? We can say we discussed it in the work session and it won't be on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Lisa, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay. So the, the next person up, um, would be Mark and Mark will talk about a couple of issues that he has. Mark?
Oh, good evening, everybody. By the way, I'm never on Facebook, so doesn't matter to me.
Me either.
That's good. Uh, I just know what my wife tells me. At any rate, we still have an issue going, but the, uh. Money's, money owed to, uh, JDM Marcy Contractors in the, uh, twenty twenty paving program. So Frank Dillon, who, uh, isn't here obviously, but, uh, he's been, uh, going back and forth with, uh. Uh, Tri-State, Cody Spiracino from Tri-State. Uh, engineering. And we still, we owe them, I need Frank to, uh. To verify the money. I don't know if it's thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars or thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. I know Frank, but, uh, we, we still owe them for six hundred and thirty-seven tons of leveling course they did. Now, we need to get this behind us so we can get on with this year's paving program.
I think he said thirty-five thousand earlier today. He said that he was agreeable to the price and that you were, and so, so was Tri-State.
Right. Okay. Thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and four cents.
Yes.
We paid. We need to put this behind us. And. I know there was an issue with the operator out there. It was, was some, some bad workmanship done. I don't know the answer to that. I know the materials were put down. They have a ticket saying they were put down. And the only thing I see is paying them and moving on. They did a really good job on the roads. I'll give them that. Very good job on the roads. So.
Are you, Mark, are you going to be looking for a motion tonight for that payment?
Yes.
All right. So I guess if we hear it out of Frank's mouth during the meeting, we can, uh, you know, move forward with it.
Yes. And Kim, you would ask, when we discussed this initially, you would ask about in the future, are we going to maybe put some, uh, put some tonnage on each street for leveling or scratch code? And now with the current, with what we got from CKS for the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. Paving program, there is some, there is some leveling course tonnage on each street.
Good.
Okay.
You're doing a great job, Mark, keeping an eye on all this stuff. Thank you.
And by the way. I had a wish list for this year of twenty-five streets and it really was a wish list. Now with, with the war on oil going on right now. There's twenty-five roads came back at over one point one million dollars. So we don't have close to that liquid fuels, even with the grant money. So I've cut it down to thirteen streets. And Joe wanted me to keep it, keep that around six hundred and forty-five thousand. So that the thirteen streets are six hundred and forty-six thousand.
With a little cushion in case if there was a, a change order, just in case, because it seems to pop up with at least one change order coming through. We have a little bit in, you know, a little bit of, uh, in residual set aside, just in case if something does pop up with a particular street.
Right.
Huge percentage increase, Mark? And price? Did you see a huge percentage increase in the prices?
This, they've gone up a bit, yes. Yeah, they did. Per ton, per ton has gone up quite a bit, just per ton of, uh, of asphalt.
Post to last year?
Compared to last year, yeah. So that's what I said. I told Joe that I said this really, my original list really was a wish list.
Mark, did it, did it update it less?
I haven't updated the list.
Did you send that out to us?
I, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mark. Yeah, I was actually going to ask that same question.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that's, uh, that's all I have to talk about.
Mark, did you want to mention too with the, the, the Army Corps Engineers that that particular area that was taking, that was sprayed?
Oh, that's the, the Tillman Avenue drainage dish runs along the railroad tracks. Down up behind Tillman Avenue. All the business is going into Philadelphia. We just, uh, had the, the, uh, the weed killer invasive species killer. We. It's monitored by the D E P. So we have, we have to stay on top of it. So it was sprayed yesterday. And they also sprayed two areas over on, uh, Bustleton Pike near the railroad tracks. So once, once the vegetation, we have to give it a chance to die, die. And, uh, I'll go into. And we'll go through the whole ditch and make sure it's all, there's no debris. Make sure it's all cleaned out. We have to keep the water flowing. We have it all flowing to Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Chief, uh, is the chief on tonight? Chief Criminal?
Um, I guess with Joe mentioned about getting these, uh, these speed boards ready, exploring that. Uh, we've had a series of fatal accidents this year. Um, we really have to start. Hitting some of the high traffic areas a little harder than we had been. Um, one of the things I want to do is put a speed board out, though bustle the nav once in a while, satellite road once in a while. And then hit some of the, uh. The more frequent complaint streets. We have one now that we, that we basically use for traffic studies. Um, but what we have can. Besides, um, showing the speed, it records the speed, what I was explaining to you guys before, but the, the studies. That's where that data comes from. Uh, what we're looking to buy is to say, basically the, the cheapest one they got to put up there just is to let people know how fast they're going, they're going at some of these streets. So, uh, I guess me and Joe, if you haven't figured this out shortly.
There was, we discussed at the last meeting about the one cut-through street and you were going to. Look into addressing that before, you know, we talked about any type of speed bumps or anything, any updates to that?
That street's in the list or a couple of streets ahead of them. Um, yeah, we only have the one that's the, the machine that has the, uh, the speed display. And we also have a discrete machine and they're both out of our studies right now. That was West Borough Avenue. It's on the list.
Okay, thanks.
And then chief with, uh, I, I, I believe it was, uh, Board Supervisor Kim, uh, there was a request for, I, I guess the, for the traffic ordinance with regard to Eastview. And the potential of advertising, uh, or, or with regard to some signage that they wanted to go over there. Um, I actually, Kim, I, I went by that particular area that you referenced. They're absolutely parking on, on that particular street with the trucks and very large trucks.
Yeah, I actually, I, I actually got three, three photos today sent to me from a few of the residents.
You could see that the guy actually has like a rut on his, like kind of on, or on his lawn or going to his lawn. So there is the appearance there, uh, you know. My, in talking with the chief, the only thing that I was asking was, um, there is some signage that's there. Uh, whether that siding signage is part of an ordinance right now or not, I'm, I'm not, we're not sure. Um, the only thing I would say my concern is, what are the alternatives? If you do put the, those truck signs on there and basically say no truck parking, no whatever. The, the business entity that's over there in that corner would basically only have in front of the building, which is maybe a large truck unloading on street road with flashers on. If that's the case, then, you know, are we setting up another potential, another issue traffic wise there? Uh, by kind of forcing it, you know, I could see maybe if they parked it on the side, but it would have to be on the business entity's own, own property. And it shouldn't definitely not be in the street. My only concern if it's on street road, are we causing another potential future hazard?
Right. I mean, I know, I know in my line of work too, you know, we get deliveries in smaller vehicles. It doesn't have to be. A tractor trailer, which is what you've seen and what, you know, uh, Chief Criminal seen and everybody else. You know, they, they could always do something like that and then have them actually pull in their lots. In, at their, in their lot when, when they could, they could schedule a delivery. Uh, and I believe, I believe all that time, all, all this has been discussed in the past. And the residents tell me that they've just, they've had it because, you know, the, uh, apparently the, either the owner or the distributors. Just don't really seem to care too much about, you know, uh, the, the residents being impacted with this. So, I mean. I don't, I don't know what the answer is other than to post it for the, uh, for the sake of the residents.
Well, I mean, part, I think they're part of it is that the, the business has to step up and be, be a better good neighbor, um, with regard to the residents and that. And the fact of the matter is, is that if they're doing damage to the person's lawn, then they need to stand up and either be accountable themselves and or the, the company that's driving that truck. Um, I, I, I mean, but for me, I'm, I'm a novice on this. I'm not a traffic engineer. For me, I probably would s- suggest maybe a, a traffic sign or signage. That is on the, the business entity's property. So that truck can't go any further than that particular area and it's parked on their own lot.
Correct.
Getting even close to the neighbor's lawn or, you know, e- even just the road itself.
Sure, sure. I mean, so that, I mean, that would be perfect if it was just. Posted at the beginning of the residential homes, obviously not, you know, in the parking lot of the, uh, the business. Because, you know, like you had said, Joe, they, they do need a place to deliver, but they just need to not. Pull up into people's yards. They, they also have, uh, they've also had issues with some of, even some of the smaller. Trucks delivering, turning around in their driveways. Uh, apparently the one fellow was complaining that the, uh, the driveway is, you know, uh, bigger vehicles turning around in a residential driveway, cutting the wheels. Overtime, takes the toll on the driveway. His, his driveway is pretty beat up now because of it. He actually had to, uh, throw a chain across the driveway to block the driveway off. So this doesn't happen any further.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I probably would do the same thing. Uh, how, how about this on, uh, on this, uh, with regard to this particular issue? Do you want myself, maybe the chief and or Mike Italia to visit the business area and talk to the business company? I mean, talk to the, the business that's there on that corner and say, listen. Yeah, we need some compliance here. You need to be a good neighbor with the resident. Um, but you, you know, you also have to be in business, but the only alternative is that there's no trucks and then. The, the rest of the trucks are going to have to be delivering from, from street road to you. Which will probably stop people from even, i- if I'm, if I'm a customer there and the truck blocks me in, I could be stuck there for an hour.
Right. I wonder what, you know, what was the verbiage going to say in, you know, the, uh, as far as the policy? I mean. I don't, I, you know, their, their concerns are just tractor trailers pulling up in front of their homes. You know, on, on the parking lot of the business, they don't have an issue with that. They just want to, you know, they were just hoping that the vehicles wouldn't, you know, park. In front of their homes. Uh, I don't know exactly how the policy would be written. You know, maybe, uh, no commercial parking past this point. I mean, you know, you guys are the experts with that. Frank or Ted could probably steer us in the right direction, but.
Well, the, the way it's written is no parking on Southeast View Avenue. Both sides, West Street Road to a point two hundred feet south. On Southview Avenue applies to commercial vehicles only. It's the way it's written.
Uh, I mean, could it be past a certain point, you know, starting, starting where the residential homes are? That what, that way?
There are driveways in the corners of, 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 uh, West Street and Southeast View. So they can already park there in the driveway. If they park in the street in the corner, they're violating state law to too close to the intersection. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So we came up to two hundred foot number just to give a buffer to the neighborhood. There's already a sign there. It's like a, you know, exercise, no trucks. I don't think it's enforceable. Um. So if we're going to, if we're going to deal with the problem, we need to put a sign that's enforceable to have an ordinance to back them up. And then the guys can write some citations if they have to. What, what's happening now is there's nothing we can do.
All right. So what, what would have to be written up to make it enforceable? I mean, how? Is there any way we can try to still help the residents out with this and, and? I mean, how, is there any way we can try to still help the residents out with this and, and, and make it enforceable?
Sure. I, I think that, uh, what I said Frank, uh, kind of mirrors what we did on Central Avenue. I think the Central Avenue problem kind of solved itself.
It, it sure did. Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm looking at it.
So chief, you're saying what I think you're saying is what is written up is what you think solves the problem?
That's my opinion, yes. Um, like I said, there's, there's a sign that's there covered in pine trees. I, I, it's, it's just like, uh, that has a slash on the truck. I don't think that's enforceable. I don't think we even have an ordinance on that. I think at some point someone just put that up. Um, so this will kind of tighten up what we're doing.
So what we need to do tonight then is to make a motion to approve the advertisement of the ordinance to, um, manage parking at Southeast View and West Street Road?
Correct.
Okay. Joe, will that come up in the manager's report?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. Cause there's nothing on the agenda about it. So if you can bring it up then we can, someone can make the motion and we can then move forward with advertising.
All right. Um, and then I, I, thank you, chief. Um, I think the only other issue is basically if you, if you got, we got, I think literally like five minutes. If Deb, if you wanted to, um, I guess maybe have a discussion on the, um, mascara issues that are coming before us.
Yeah. Um, thank you. So as you know, I went to the SWIPSWAG, um, committee meeting on May 10th. And what the committee had decided to do is we're going to enforce the penalty provisions stated in the mascara contract. And there's a letter going out from the three townships, us, Upper South and Northampton. And Frank can talk about that. And, um, Mascara will be giving notice that we're going to enforce the penalty provisions.
So yes, I'm going to ask for a motion authorizing me to send the letter advising Mascara. John Tarenti of my office is writing the letter. He's outlining the penalties. And I want to send it out before the next meeting. So all three townships are going to send the same letter saying that we're enforcing the terms of the contract and are going to enforce the penalties.
Yeah.
What are some of the penalties, Frank?
I don't know. I haven't seen the letter yet.
Oh, okay.
I can read some for you. Um, basically here's some quick ones. You fail to clean up spilled material. For each occurrence, it's 200. Uh, failure, failure to neglect or clear or resolve collection complaints within eight, eight working hours. Another 200. Uh, in the event of a, hold on, uh, changing the day of the collection without notifying the affected premises or any, or any municipality is $1,000 each occurrence. Starting route collections before 6:00 AM at 500 each occurrence. Collection after 6:00 PM without approval of the municipality is 300 each occurrence. Things like that, Ed.
Yeah. Who, who's going to be, um, who's going to be bringing these things up? The public? And, and who's going to monitor, not monitor it, but receive that information, uh, to go back to Mascara or, um, is it a fine or something?
Well, we're going to probably submit bills to them for their, what they, um, aren't doing in a timely basis. And they're probably going to dispute it and, you know, it's going to be a rigmarole. But I, uh, after talking to Deb and to John, you know, the municipalities have had enough. I mean, the, like, we gave them leeway because of COVID. The, the citizens are upset. You're upset. We got to do something.
But I.
Frank, Frank, are the penalties?
Going to be the, like, police out there who's going to report those things?
Well, if I could speak to this, thank you. Um, we have, um, some of the townships have spreadsheets. We have, I called, we have a binder with every complaint. Everything. So that's going to continue. We keep track of all the complaints. And that's the documentation that we will have. Whether, um, that's how Lower South is doing it. When I called, um, like I said, some townships have spreadsheets with all the addresses, all the complaints, all the dates. And if, um, I like for the, the residents, if they could add pictures, that would be even, that would be wonderful. That's even more documentation.
And Frank, if we have $5,000 worth of violations in a month and we're paying them $105,000 every month, 12 months a year, can we just subtract those penalties off our payment? Or do we actually have to send them a bill and wait for them to pay us?
I believe, I believe, after I call for this one, I, I believe we have the ability to deduct it right from the bill. I'm, I believe my recollection is seeing language on that.
Yeah, that's what I would do and put the onus on them.
Yep.
Well, Doug.
I'll, I'll talk to the other two solicitors and we, we should probably get, you know, make sure we're all doing the same thing.
How much longer, how much longer do we have in the contract with them?
December 31st, 22. One portion ends before the other. Doesn't the yard waste end first, Deb?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, and when does that end?
Um, I think that's coming up. And then there's still at least another year in the other one, but we're going to have, I'll, I didn't review all that. I can if, if and when's necessary.
Is there some way to clarify the things that are happening? And, uh, you know, somebody's just annoyed about something that may have been minor. Uh, how do we determine that it's a major $500 regulation or whatever?
I think somebody's going to have to see it. I mean, just a phone call saying, hey, isn't going to work. I mean, if somebody calls, we're going to have to document it or, you know, it'll just be a problem.
And that's why, that's why I think this would be wonderful if, uh, that could be included in any documentation by a resident or an employee. But, but the SWIPSWAG, um, committee, we all agreed on this. We've had a discussion about it. And frankly, as a resident, so we're fed up and we made this decision and we're going to, we're doing it. So, um, I was going to ask the supervisors for, um, to support it. However, I talked to Frank and since he's going to make a motion for the letter, it would be, it would be redundant to do both motions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Deb.
All right.
It was a productive meeting, I'll tell you that.
Sounds like it. Are we ready to go? We ready to go to the public? Switch over to the public?
7:32 I see.
Okay. Is there anything else, Joe, or can we switch?
I believe Peter sent out two emails if I, if my recollection serves me.
He did.
Yeah, we, we have to switch, sign off and sign back on, right? Okay. Let's switch over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finishing work session, moving over to public meeting.